May Hapon. May Hapon. Check, check. Check may Hapon. Check one, two, three.
Hello sir, good afternoon.
Claro.
Claro sir, loud and clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Check one, two, three. Check one, two, three.
Hello sir, good afternoon, loud and clear.
Okay, thank you. Go. 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 Put the go. Okay, good sir, Kaloyisagino, ikaw, kumusta? Rest in Lord. Hey. Good afternoon, everyone. Okay, forum naman dayali, no? Ah, hey, Mr. Secretary, Majority Leader Flora, and the rest of the members of the 19 city council, may Hapon. Okay. May Hapon, the 121st regular session. Sa kunyang panusod, dak ba 'yan sa kagayan di'ogo, is now called on order, please do stand and invocation. The Councilor John Michael Seno, mayong hapon kanimo konsihan.
Mayong hapon, our City Vice Mayor Rinier Wakin Kikangui, members of the county. Ah, in the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Lord Jesus, King of Kings, and Lord of Lords, we come now praising your mighty power and endless authority. Your kingdom lasts forever and your dominion has no bounds. Lord, please be with us, government officials, as we weigh the pros and cons of each constituents' request. Give us wisdom on how to best represent everyone. Father, we also ask that you give us leaders courage so that every event when it's hard, we will continue to boldly represent their constituents' needs and those of the most vulnerable. We pray for our nation in the midst of struggles and for the upcoming election. We pray for our government and its leaders, all its liberals, those who will be stepping into leadership and those stepping down who have held those positions. We pray for your spirit to rep- to present with wisdom and guidance in, though and above all things. We pray for the humility of Jesus, the strength to be forgiving, the patience to be understanding, and the endurance to accept the consequences of holding to what we believe to be right. May we put our trust in power of good to overcome evil and the power of love to overcome hatred. We pray to those who have taken up arms in anger or revenge or even in the cause of justice to grant the grace of conversion to the path of peaceful dialogue and constructive collaboration. We pray for the vision to see and the faith to believe in a world emancipated from violence. A new world where fear shall no longer lead men to commit injustice, nor selflessness make them bring sufferings to others. We pray to those who believe, who have already lost their lives as victims of human cruelty and chemical warfare, open wide your arms and involve them all in the embr- embrace of your compassion, healing, and everlasting life. We pray to the innocent who live in the shadow of war and terror, especially the frightened children, be a shelter and strength, their heaven and hope. Help us to devote our whole life and thought and energy to the task of making peace in your power and in your name. Praying always for the inspiration and the ability to fulfill the destiny for which we and all men were created. And may we, and may your kingdom come now through us in the lordship of King Jesus over our lives. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Councilor John Michael Seno, for the meaningful prayer this afternoon and for the singing of our national anthem. For the Kagayan, the Orbo March. Mayong hapon sa tanan. Mayong hapon. Mayong hapon, so, Mr. Secretary, can you do the roll call and determine if you have a forum?
Mayong hapon, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Mayong hapon.
Honorable Rinier Wakin, VOI, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. For the first district councillors, Honorable Edna Imdahino, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Roger Jabaday, Honorable Saldi O'Okon,
Present.
Honorable George Isgoking, Honorable Ruben R. Daba,
Present.
Honorable Lordan Giswan, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo. For the second district councillors, Honorable Jolene Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable Maria Lourdes Isgaani,
Present.
Honorable Ian Mark PinaKaya, Honorable Zuset G. Magtahas Daba, Honorable Judolfo E. Lau Jr., Honorable, Honorable Enrico Di Salcedo, Honorable Joseline B. Rodriguez,
Present.
Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas. For the ex-official members, Honorable Yan Lam Islim, Ligan ng Mga Barangay President, and Honorable John Michael Alseno, City Escape Federation President, there is forum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, so we have a forum. So, Majority Floor Leader, Ian Mark Pblat Nakaya, mayong hapon kanimo, and you have the floor, Majority Floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor Rinier Wakin, Beliski Kamui. Ah, just a little observation, this is the first time Councilor Malugani has joined the virtual meeting. Wala kayo na ayong tarpulin sa likoddo ko. Mayong hapon. Mayong hapon, mayong hapon. To our colleagues in the council and friends from the media, fellow Kagayanans, mayong hapon. I move, Mr. Chairman, to dispense with the reading of the minutes of meeting on January 24, 2022, and to consider the furnishing of its copy to every member as the reading itself.
Hopefully move by the Majority Floor Leader, any second.
Second.
Under. Correction, is there any correction? Hearing and there is no correction after all, this is a way of.
Likewise move for reapproval with said minutes of meeting.
Which finality?
Second.
Seconded.
We have one special report portion, Mr. Chairman, the, ah, two gentlemen of the council, Councilors Salcedo and Dabaday, who would like to first, Councilor Salcedo render a report as regards his concerns as on the RPT remitances to the barangay, and then he would like to expound further on that matter. And Councilor Roger Abadai as regards the demolition, demolition incident in the barangay Patag. So, Councilor Salcedo and Dabaday, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Councilor. As mentioned by the Majority Floor Leader, our first reporter, Councilor Enrico Salcedo, mayong hapon kanimo. Councilor.
Mayong hapon, Mr. Chairman, mayong hapon sa tanan. Ah, daghangin salamat, Majority Floor Leader. Ah, Mr. Chairman.
May abot sa ato nga mga reklamo sa mga barangay, bigarbing isarinitan sa RPT. Kay, ano ang magod sa local code, ah, Mr. Chairman, nga klaro, tato kayo nga ining nag-share ang atong mga barangay na sa local code sa ARPE 7160, sa chapter seven, sa disposition of proceeds nga klaro kayo, Mr. Chairman, nga kining nag-share ang atong barangay nga 30% sa ibayad sa syudad. Niya 50% ano sa 30% Mr. Chairman, ah, ibilin sa barangay, niyang the remaining 50%, one ang equal sharing, ah, bayn-baynun sa ah, barangay. Kung atong tanawan, Mr. Chairman, isa ning, isa ni ang RPT share nagisaligan sa barangay nga ilang income. Number one is, ah, era, internal revenue allotment, second, in RPT, second nga dak po nga ilang isaligan. Niya ang, kuanda yun ang 50% share sa community tax or sa resident certificate, ah, Mr. Chairman. Oga other income din, labina sa barangay, income. Kung atong tanawan, monigisaligan sa mga salary, mga kuryente, uban pang, mga balayrunun sa barangay. Labina karoon, Mr. Chairman, na na ay COVID, na tunggi ato bang problema. Ang sulte, gabot sa ato, Mr. Chairman, nga may na lang unta, umbi remit on time sa city government, ang share sa barangay kay matud nila, Mr. Chairman, ah, six to nine months daw, wala marimit ang RPT share. Dili lang RPT share ang wala marimit, Mr. Chairman, appeal ang financial aid nga 108,000. Niya, monang, according sa ila sa financial aid na ay two years nga wala marimit, 108 times two is 200. May na lang daw nga matabang nila sa COVID response, labina karoon nga still level three gabon ang Kagayan di'oro. Ang niya, side bantap, Mr. Chairman, giagi sa barangay captain, si Majority, giagi barangay captain, si Roger Abaday, giagi barangay captain. Niya, naman ang atong Vice Mayor malabot, si Edna Dino, giagi gabon barangay tagawad, even Bibut Trogli, ah, Councilor Bibut Rodriguez, giagi o barangay captain, ah, Mr. Chairman, o si J.B. Pasqual, bayo-bay taderi. Sayod dangat, isaligan kita, na ubang gani, wala pa maka sweldo. But sa, Mr. Chairman, ako niirefer ang akong special report, Committee on Barangay Affair, o sa Committee on Finance and Appropriation para atong pamatanong kung unsa katinuod, God. Kung tinuod bang o wala pa marimit. Eh, usbon ako, makatabang gi kaayg dako, o ang gani ang uban, wala pagit kasweldo, God, uban barangay. Tungod aning problema, wala pa marimit, ah, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, o mayong hapon sa tanan.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Enrico Salcedo.
Mr. Chair.
What? Okay, Councilor Joseline Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, good afternoon, fellow councilors. Ah, it's a very good report, Mr. Chair, being preview sa barangay, Chairman, barangay na sa. Let, it's not only, ah, it's, there's a delay in the giving, that is true, with the report of Councilor Eric Salcedo. In fact, I would like to explain, Mr. Chair, because I've been looking into this matter also. Kaya nga kung pag-umangkun, barangay chairman, kung sa barangay na sa red, it has been an ongoing problem. Okay, section 271 of local code of 1991, paragraph two, letter, this states that the barangay will get their share without need of any further action, meaning they will be given their share through the barangay questionnaire and then without any lien or without any holdback of the, ah, for whatever purpose, meaning delay din pwede, na i-delay ang pag-hatag sa RPT based on this section sa atong local code. Ang naitabo, Mr. Chair, ang ato manggunglo, ato, section 271 states that also the RPT should be given quarterly, meaning i-hatag quarterly and should be given within five days from the last month of the quarter. Unsa'y naitabo, Mr. Chair, ang barangay na sa red receive their RPT for July, August, and September. Last year pa, that was the last payment niya ilang nadawat. Wala sila nakadawat sa November and December, and we are already in the month of January. It is very clear in the provision, Mr. Chair, that there will be no excuses, like, for example, dili makasubmit sa ilang mga papeles or dili makahatag sa ilang mga, ah, on time. That is not a reason to hold the real property tax. This should be given on the exact time, exact month, kay wala na sa provision na kung dili kata-submit sa imong papeles or whatever reason there is na ma-delay, delay siya for whatever reason there is, dili na pwede sa atong balao'd. Kay kini, sakto si Councilor Eric Salcedo, kwarta kanin sa katauhan na ipanghatag usag sa sweldo sa atong kabarangayan. Mauna, Mr. Chair, I would like to submit a manifestation on this actually ga'tuon pakuani and I've been gathering facts, no, from the data, from the barangay chairs and the barangays, and hopefully this will be addressed properly. Kay usahay, mingingon, Manggod, ang atong, ah, ang RPT, ang atong office na, ay, wala pa. Kay wala namun nakitaan, ay, wala pa. Kay tuan na dito, this pinakaulahi, wala namun nakitaan, ay, wala pa. Kay tungod, wala pa day napirmahan. These excuses is not acceptable sa atong balao'd, Mr. Chair. I hope that this will be addressed upon kay labina sa pandemic, daghan kay pinanlan at kwarta sa atong barangay, and should be given on their specific, nga dapat i-hatag kanila what is due to the barangays. Hopefully, this will be acted upon and hopefully i-hatag what is due to the barangay sa sakto nga panahon, sakto usag, nga, ah, nga sakto usag, nga panahon nga magamit nila ang ilang kwarta sa kabarangayan. So daghan kay salamat, Mr. Chair. I hope this can be, ah, addressed to the committee involved, Committee on Finance, para ma-address gininga problema, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Joseline Rodriguez. So, well, we have to, we have to note it out that, ah, since it is a pandemic, no, maybe there is some delays, not just the locality or the LGO, but so as to the national government. So, there are affected by this COVID-19 and so as some other national agencies are working at home and so as our courts and any other, ah, government institutions, tungod sa COVID sa tingali, no? Since it's an obligation, it is an obligation and responsibility of any other government agencies, especially ah, government agencies, especially when it comes to financial matter. So, okay, our, our
Chairman, Chairman.
President of, ah, Councillor Yan Lam Lim, okay, our ABC president of, ah, our president of all barangay captains, so maybe, ah.
Mayong hapon, Mr. Chair.
Mayong hapon.
Mayong hapon sa tanan, sa kung kauban. I agree with the Councillor Eric Salcedo. Pero dili manggana, na daghan na komplain pa ingo din ni sa ato, no? Atong gi-verify sa accounting system. Usahay, manggod, let's be honest, usahay mga kapitan, dugay magreport. So, sila manggod ang, sila manggod ang mabuhan ani, kung dugay sila magreport, so enable, na may uban na, um, um, lagi isubmit na to. Pero paabu pa pila na kabulan, dili masubmit. I agree nga, i-revisit na to na sa finance o sa mga kapitan. Submit sa mga record, mga bootshare na supposed to be, kay dili man parehas sa una god na ah, labyan-labyan na istikto na karoon ang koa. If you did not submit, even to the LG. Di ka matagaan, okay, kwan, ka na nga papir, makapirma sa next year, kung dili ni mo masubmit ang mga requirements. Usahay, manggod, dina to kalikayan na may uban god, for few, na may uban siguro kapitan, um, um, ang pagsubmit, pirmala sa ni karoon, o kita. Pro, dugay ang pagsubmit nila, pila na kabulan nila bay. So, I think, Mr. Chair, ato na, okay, ko support ko kang Eric Salcedo. Ato lang i-revisit kung, usahay naitabo, nga, dugay, gud, ang pagtransmit tal sa barangay. That's all, thank you.
Well, every barangay, you know, every local government unit, especially the barangay, has their own discretion for any submission of the requirements, that is why. That is the prerequisites, especially for a financial, ah, matter. And dili sayon, ah, labina na ngatunahan.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Councillor Joseline Rodriguez.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I understand, ah, with the pronouncement of Councillor Alam Lim. Actually, the, the law is very clear, not unless we have a policy, we have a policy for that. It is very clear. It says, without need of any further action, meaning, bisan pal kung sakadelay ang papeles, delay din pwede i-delay ang RPT tungod kinanlanon gina sa barangay. So, there is no excuses for that, ah, Mr. Chair. Hopefully, na kanin this will be addressed kay bisan sa atong time, sa una pa, ma-delay ni siya, okay, with the pandemic, let's put it this way. Pero wala gini siya na, na put into practice na mahatag sila siya. What is the, the, the right time to give to the barangay? Wala gini. And there will be no excuses for not giving because kay wala nakakomplain barangay. They may sanction the barangay, but then the delay in the RPT should not be delayed on tap pwede na nga naitabo, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sir Chairman.
Mr. Chair. Enrodrigas.
Sir Chair.
Hey, Councillor Saldi Okon.
Salamat, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for the nice report of Councillor Salcedo, Mr. Chair. First, we have our own organization of the barangay chairman, the Philippines, of course, the ABC president. As far as to the matter as being reported pertaining to the RPT. Very clear, under the law, Mr. Chairman, that the RPT should be released every quarter. And every, ah, five days before the end of every quarter, the RPT should be automatically, ah, released to every barangay, Mr. Chairman. Now, di kumusuupag kang Councillor EBC president Alam Lim, na ang problema na sa kapitan. I don't think so, Mr. Chairman, ang problema na sa kapitan, because ang mga empleyado na to sa kapitan sa barangay na buhi diya. So, meaning to say, ang atong mga barangay chairman, mandaturis sila ang report na ini, matu sa atong, ah, EBC president during the meeting. So, another thing I wonder, Mr. Chair, that this, ah, report of Councillor Eric Salcedo. My query is, why the barangay captain directly reported this matter to Councillor Salcedo? When in pa Councillor Salcedo, it's not representative of EBC president. In other word, if there is some problems para sa barangay matters, this matter should be, you know, ah, represented and reported at to the representative of the EBC president, no, in the person, our very own Councillor Alam Lim, Mr. Chairman. Bata, napasalamat ya pong kokang Councillor Salcedo, nagidalan ya kininga problema, dini sa buatan sa punsiyo, Mr. Chairman. Then, another thing, kung matinuod manggaling po na pinalitan, ang problema na sa kapitan, wala sila musumiter ini. So, untsok may trabaho sa atong City Liga, untsok may trabaho sa atong, ah, City Accountant. The City Accountant should be, ah, refer this matter to the City Legal, so that the City Legal will also pull up the details of every barangay. Nakatungulat pa sila magreport na ini, Mr. Chairman, para nga dili ma'amper ang operasyon diya mismo sa atong kabarangayan, Mr. Chairman. So, muna nga mahilig ka din eh, ugad, langay-langay, Mr. Chairman, gani ang atong bahala na mingingon mo karoon diya ang auto order ko. Even sa sistema sa distribution of our ayuda, wak ya pong kini magtaro, Mr. Chairman. So, 'yung anibadi ay ang atong kida't sa kagayan di oro, atong gi-perwiso ang katauhan sa kagayan di oro na ini. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Saldi Okon. Okay, any other, okay, Councillor, Councillor Enrico Salcedo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ako lang kagaling understanding, Mr. Chairman. Ah, even lugar nga, na may mga requirements na ipasubmit, pero kinalan gapon nga i-hatag gapon ang share, kay kunai suspension, am, kay declareo suspension, ang kowaman or ang accounting. Dili rin sila makadisborse, sa to pa, kundi makadisborse, dili na rilisan sila account and vice pa dolos bangko. Pero, at least, narimit ang RPT share rito sa bank, sa depository bank, sa barangay. Muna akong kagaling, ah, understanding, ah, Mr. Chairman. Anyway, ini ako, Mr. Chairman, sa akong special report. Ah, gi-refer na ko, usbon ako, gi-refer na ko sa barangay affairs committee and the finance committee para pag inquire lang kung how true. Ah, kung pila kabulan, number one, pila kabulan ang wala marimit, second, ang katong, sa RPT ni, atong financial aid sa barangay. O kanina yung ikatulo, katu dayong fifty percent share sa community tax, ah, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
In addition, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Enrico Salcedo.
Mr. Chair, in addition.
Okay, Councillor Saldi Oko.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Chair. I take also to include this very important matter, ah, Mr. Chairman. Ah, somebody called me from barangay Gusa. Emplyado ni sila, three to, two to three months, wala sweldo ang empleyado sa barangay Gusa. Di kumatuon niya na, Mr. Chairman, gi-report lang ni sa ato, I hope kung inuod manggaling ni, matagaan ko ng igong apantagad kay three to two, two to three months, wala sweldo ang mga empleyado ko no, sa barangay Gusa. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Saldi Okon. So, any other wants to add something about the topic, our special report regarding the real property tax from the barangay? So, la na. So, okay, as wished by the special reporter, Councillor Enrico Salcedo. Thank you for bringing this matter to shed light, since, ah, well, when it comes to RPT, that could be an obligation of the state, not just the local government unit, but so as to the, ah, the treasury. Eh, bis, abismani, no, cycle mani from national government down to locality, and then to the smallest unit of the governments, the barangay. So, the equity is just one of the, well, ah, revenue, or any other, or any statutory obligation of every barangay. So, as for the payment of every personal services, so as any obligations such as, ah, by and by nun skwinti, suga, or any other, um, so dini, dini mag-immediate o dinigikan ang maong ipangbayad. So, to shed light, nga nung naulahini. So, this matter could be well represented when it comes to hearing and aid to every barangay, and so as to the any agency respectfully regarding on this matter of this RPT, for the delay of the RPT. Ah, chaired by Councillor Yan Lam Lim, our ABC president, maybe you can, ah, bring in this matter with a special reporter, ah, as you heard a while ago, a, ah, special reporter, Councillor Enrico Salcedo. And so as to the finance committee, so as to ah, investigate, to further, investigate further on what really happened, you know, so thank you for a good reporter, Councillor Enrico Salcedo, and I think it is said, a joint investigation or, ah, a joint, ah, committee investigation or deliberate this matter. Councillor Yan Lam Lim, and so as Councillor Edna Markban Dahino. Okay, our second reporter this afternoon, as scheduled, sir, any, okay, Councillor. Councillor Roger Abadai, mayong hapon kanimo, Councillor.
Good afternoon, Presiding Officer, our Honorable Vice Mayor, Premier Wakinki Kanui. My colleagues in the Nineteenth City Council, of course, for all people who are following us in the online and virtual space. Ah, mayong hapon sa tanan. My report, Mr. Chairman, this is with regards to the Order of the Court. Ah, Presiding Judge Anna Candida Casino of the RTC Brand Seventeen regarding the demolition order to, ah, the land, ah, involving, ah, one thousand, more than one thousand five hundred estimated families residing at, ah, zone four, zone five, zone six, and partly zone seven area of barangay Patag, Mr. Chairman. The order was executed last, the Order of Demolition dated, ah, January fourth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, Mr. Chairman. And I would like to appreciate also the judge, because he also considered, considering that we have, we are on the stage of this pandemic. Ah, he have given these residents, the occupants of this area, ah, sixty days upon order upon receipt of this, ah, respondents, Mr. Chairman. So, sixty days counting from, oh, it's almost here, Mr. Chairman, but there will be, ah, demolish from the land in that they are occupying, Mr. Chairman. Now, this land, to give you an overview, ah, ah, this is the area, this is the land that the Sangguneang Palung Sun, ah, of the city, no, kita, Nineteenth City Council. That we pass a resolution, number thirteen five three seven, that's twenty. Entitled the solution requesting President Rodrigo Arde thirty to approve and give due course to the recommendation of the, for the issuance of presidential proclamation declaring the portion of lot, this, this lot, this area occupied by the respondent, four three five three, cadastral two three seven, and the whole four three five seven, all of Kagean Euro City, you know, in Patag, Mr. Chairman. So, ah, the, this is a residential reservation for occupants inside Camp Ibangilista Philippine Army, Kagean dioro. Now, on March, based on the after resolution, on March five, two thousand, the Office of the President has an email to our secretary, Secretary of Record, nagsentuk email na, ah, communicated to the Office of Secretary of the Sangguneang, our Sangguneang request for a drop of the proclamation. So, drop proclaiming, uh, scripted, ah, by the Hellsiders Urban Corps Association, the UP. I think, ah, the Chairman of the Housing Committee, Altorok Bandas, has, ah, already, ah, heard this, ah, gano, this, ah, dispute. And then, I think there was an executive order issued by, ah, the city, the city, no? So, Mr. Chairman, ah, we are not, we are not going against, we are not undermining the decision of the court. Ah, we respect, ah, the principle of the rule of law. But, ah, Mr. Chairman, we are, the, the barangay council of Patag has passed a resolution. They designed it, Mr. Chairman, I think they have published, the all, ah, the resolution after hearing of this, ah, ah, cases, they passed a resolution that if possible, ah, there will be a difference of the order of the demolition. Asking our assistance, asking our help, there should be a suspension of demolition and department. Considering that, ah, ah, based on their premise that there is a presidential memorandum from the Terpason of Presidential Commission for Urban Corps instructing that all failed operation, or division chip office, that there is a temporary suspension of all pre-demolition process. Pinging the inquiry later to the Office of the Court Administrator Oka and the Department of Justice. So, they are relying on this, ah, ah, order, Mr. Chairman. In fact, upon, ah, order of the, ah, upon receiving the, ah, drop and resolution of our Sangguneang, the, there was a, the, the, there was a order for the suspension of pre-demolition during that time, Mr. Chairman. Now, the court has already, ah, ordered that be given sixty days, Mr. Chairman. So, ah, I do not know if, ah, if this will be executed, what will happen to our resident, na, mga balaydiya, nakapristo na, for how many years? Na, na sila diyan nagpuyo. So, ah, hanga kong hangyo, Mr. Chairman, if the, with the council, kung mahimo, I will refer this, ah, this to the committee, or Chairman of Housing, kung mahimo, ah, hangyo na to ang courti, we will ask the court nga. While there are legal and, ah, there are legal matters to be asserted, and they have, they affected the residents, one thousand five hundred plus, ah, there was no proper relocation, relocation, what happened to them? Wala pa ma sila, relocate ba ni sila, yeah, under, so they are subject for relocation, no demolition, if there is no relocation. Wala pa ni, ma, ma, Mr. Chairman, that is the one of the reason of this special reporter, nga, kung mahimo, we can request the court to suspend for how many, ah, span of time? So that we can also assess or prepare for the relocation of these people, if and when, ah, this case will not be asserted. So, that's my prayer, Mr. Chairman, and I am asking the, ah, sympathy of the majority members of the council that if possible, we can pass a resolution, asking the Honorable Court to suspend lang, suspended lang sa, dili kay, you are challenging his decision. Do't asserten kung, kung sao na to pagpasarning mga demolish, malimulis, pasindunapay remedyo, or we can ask any, ah, special remedy to resolve the matter, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. So, ah, I'm endorsing this, Mr. Chairman, together with the resolution of barangay Patag, ah, ah, to the committee, Mr. Chairman, for his disposal, for the disposal, this, this, don't touch this, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, query from the reporter.
Thank you, Councillor Roger Abadai.
If possible, may, may, ah, will, if, this will be referred to the, ah, committee. It's urgent, Mr. Chairman, kay, the time is past. If possible, if we can decide today, I think it is proper, Mr. Chairman. Kung, ah, that is with the, with the discretion of the body, Mr. Chairman, of this honorable, ah, member of the city council. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Roger Abadai, for the proper time. Councillor Roger Abadai for your special report, for such, ah, requesting for any resolution. Okay, Councillor, Councillor John Michael Zeno.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer, and good afternoon to our Majority Floor Leader and, ah, my colleagues in the Nineteenth City Council, friends from the media and the Filipino gay annons. and uh, my colleagues in the Nineteenth City Council, friends from the media and the Filipino guy, Annons. I have uh, supported, you know, the statement of Councilor Roger Abaday, considering that we are in the state of pandemic, we are in alert level three status. And uh, i-demolish nimo within sixty days, na ikuwan sa korte. Maybe now, na siguro, mag-decide ka, and I am in favorable, na mag-request sa court, na dili lang sa uh, implement meantime, no? While, while the committee on the uh, uh Housing and Urban Poor will tackle it on how to uh, have the relocation sites for this uh, uh, one thousand five hundred families. Hey, as a man in ato sila ipapuyod, yes, the prindalan, wabi, wala sila kapuyan, kadi man puntalan ngayong napod sila may puyan. So, at least uh, in the council, we have done, no, uh, to prevent this, kaya magkatibula ag and considering, considering yet, Mr. Chairman, we are in alert level three status pa, we are facing the COVID nineteen pandemic. Dili na to dugangan ng problema ng atong mga isu. Thank you and good afternoon.
Thank you, Councilor John Michael Seno.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Saldi Okon.
Salamat, Mr. Chair. Dili ni madala, ug level three, Mr. Chairman. Tugutan ta, back to normal, ang atong sistema sa COVID nineteen. But may ipasabot, after level three, i-demolish ka na? May di kong pangutan na una. So nga'tong buhat lang, Mr. Chairman. I am very knowledgeable as far as this matter is concerned, because I understand during my chairmanship as committee on Urban Poor the one thousand residents in Barangay Patag brought this matter before my office. And in fact, we even visited the area with Councilor uh, former General uh, Kaliso. We went there just to get the uh, proper information as far as the problem is concerned, Mr. Chairman. Now, pangutan na sa nato, Mr. Chairman, kaya Councilor Abaday. Canos ato, Councilor Roger, i-issue ang maong demolition, January twenty-two? Sir?
January twenty-two.
So when will be the effectivity of the demolition, Councilor, please?
Sixty days upon reset of the respondents.
Pardon, fifteen days?
Sixty, sixty days, upon reset of the respondent.
So meaning after sixty days from, canos na dawat na, Councilor Roger, sa Patag, when was that?
Uh, may I request the uh, Councilor Sading at this first, uh, gentle vice mayor, so that uh, relapse the order?
So meaning to say sixty days today is uh, January or February, March, so dimudo last week of March, na na i-demolition, Mr. Chairman. Now, we, gihimo na to na vice. Naghi mo taog is special report. Oga, we cannot, you know, we cannot hold that because the decision of the court is also the decision of the Supreme Court. Why? Because there was a decision of the Supreme Court that the land in question is under military reservation. And all the title therein, i-declared, kini na and void, because dili manato matituluhan ang uh, military reservation. And it is very clear that the uh, more than uh, one thousand five hundred to two thousand residents in uh, Barangay Patag, the lot they are occupied are within the uh, uh, military reservation. But uh, atong gihimo ang uh, apilasyon na to, ang atong hangyo, atong hanangdung presidente to please consider the problem. Ang maong Utah under sa presidential proclamation, so dimudo ang maka-reverse punin na maong decision sa Supreme Court, ang iharapod gahum sa atong presidente na to kung ipangayon sa presidente, na marireverse punin sa presidential proclamation, na instig na para sa military reservation ihatag nalang kini sa mga aktwal na maupantin, Mr. Chairman, kaya ganuman dili ng putso tabur ang militari na to sa Patag, kaya crowd did na kaayon ganis sa reserve study, namon General Kaliso, na mubalhe na mangani ang militari dito sa layok na lugar. So kanadya, para na na sa mga residenya, yang nalipait na ni Ana, kaya dibausan man ta sa opisina, sa presidente na adun na iplanong i-sorbi ang maong area. So karoon, Mr. Chairman, ang atong isupip sa resolution na tong pangayon sa korte, sa Brand Seventeen, na di sa nato ipa-demolish, ipa-resolve sa nato ang atong leader sa presidente, kung unsang action sa presidente ni Ana, kaya nasamtantang na ipasorbi ka na balik sa presidente. So meaning to say, dili nalang tamingo na, iho lang sa inabian sa pandemic, what if after the pandemic, kurut na lugar na sila? Unilean na tangimo on, hangyo ang korte, ayaw lang sa ni i-demolish, honorable court tungkol kay ang presidente nagsulat pa me, i-resolve sa nato unsang balo sa atong mahal ng presidente, kaya ganuman under udah loh, tikam maka demolish o boleh relocation. Yaw one thousand five hundred to two thousand families, as a man ato na ibutan, diba ka problema ng atong sida din oh, Mr. Chairman? So na tagi palit no one, na diditers, dito sa bukit, salumbia, dili sa pa ibo, Mr. Chairman. Yano na puyod, karoon diya, na na kukupar, upay.
Mr. Chairman, we are going away, Mr. Chairman. We are, oh yeah, our, our topic is about the
Opo, dili di gawin, awi. Itang na going away, Councilor Roger, this is for the benefit of the people of Patag, I just give you an idea for you to understand, this is a giving away. What are you talking about?
Councilor Saldi, we are not talking about the merits of the case because that is for the court, the court has already decided. So it is not our jurisdiction.
We are asking, we are asking, Councilor Roger.
We are only asking the court to suspend, Mr. Chair.
Okay, okay.
We are asking, the Presiding, sir, I have shared the floor. We are asking the considerable, the consideration of the honorable court to please hold in abian because we wrote a letter addressed to the president to resolve this problem, this matter. After this very moment, Mr. Chair, there is no ineliteria to answer from the office of the president. We hold in abian, Mr. Chairman, just to preserve the uh, residents, uh, people around in Barangay Patag, Mr. Chairman. As I said earlier, one thousand five hundred na as a nato na ibutan. Thank you, wala ku, thank you very much, Councilor Roger.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Saldi Okon. That is the prayer of Councilor Roger Abaday, Councilor Saldi Okon. So any, okay, the chairman of committee on Urban Poor. That is why, that is the prayer of Councilor Roger Abaday, okay? Eh, an opinion coming from Councilor Edgar Cavandlas.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the decision of, the, the order of the court is for the sheriff to coordinate with this local government unit before the demolition. That is a requirement under the local government code. So therefore, uh, before uh, they can proceed for the demolition, then they have to come to us for assistance. Now, as a background there, Mr. Chairman. This matter was uh, heard in our committee, and we conducted several meetings. In fact, for the information of the body, there was a task force that was created to look into the issue of uh, the uh, situation, the status of the residents there. Yes, the property was uh, declared as a military reservation by the Supreme Court. Correct, uh, Councilor Okon. But then, there was a petition that was filed by the homeowners association that a portion of that military reservation should be reserved for uh, relocation. Especially the area where the houses or residence, the residential houses of uh, the petitioners is located. Now, so we conducted, conducted several meetings, I think uh, she uh, Councilor Gerly was also present. Hmm, and uh, the task force was represented by several national government officers. We have the DNR, we have the Emphasis of the Philippines, the uh, the Urban Poor, the PCUP. We have the uh, Italy Army, and National Housing Authority, everybody was there. So we were here, meeting in, in, in those meetings. And then now, we were informed by the Office of the President to, to prepare a draft presidential proclamation that would amend the original presidential proclamation, preserving that entire area in Patag, uh, Camp Ibangilista, Camp Ibangilista as a military reservation. So, we drafted the, the committee drafted the the presidential proclamation, and it was the consensus that uh the area to be recommended for uh, relocation of these residents to be located inside that reservation should only be ten hectares. Diman pwedeng iro na to hatag, kaya asa man, bisikang mang sundalo na po, mawala. So, we drafted, but the problem, the problem is we cannot submit or we cannot delineate the boundaries of this ten hectare because we were not allowed to conduct a survey inside Patag. So dili kita pwedeng na magsurud-sul dito, kay bisa mo sugot ang army, and bisa mo sugot ang DNR, ganuman. Kadi daob man sila sa Supreme Court, it will be a contradiction. Ilaman tong kaso, nga sila na ka daob, di sila na say mo, survey, so so what we did?
DNR.
Yes, DNR. So what we did, Mr. Chairman, is we prepared the presidential proclamation sans or without the technical description. We suggested in our resolution that it will be the Office of the President to specify the area to be declared as uh, as a relocation. So, ang ato dito sa atong resolution, I think we pass that resolution here, we pass that here. That uh, we will delegate the authority to conduct the survey because the Office of the President has all the power to tell the, the people in the uh, in Camp Alaga, oh, Camp Ibangilista to allow the survey, but we, we cannot do that. And to specify where, in the whole area of the reservation, the ten hectares be taken. So munang na itabok, uh, and that was also the request of the homeowners, the homeowners were also here. Many times, they were also here, we accommodated everything that they requested. So, so, puplit na na, so, kona na dito karoon sa malakanyang ang atong request. Uh, I do not know what happened, diman ato, lagi mawa, man, man, makatubag, sinitabo. Wala pa y reaction, now. Insofar as the decision of this, of this case is concerned. Wala pa mahimo, anak, okay, because of the separation of power. Uh, we cannot dictate the court to say yes or no. What only, what we can do is only to request for uh hangi hangyo, gitama, to hangi hangyo, lubo, luho, dan hangi. And in fact, we requested two or three times already, na ma delay, ma delay kining uh, demolition, now uh so, yes, we can, we can request one another, for another uh, uh, extension, extension. But uh, at the end of the day, I know uh, the only uh, solution here is uh, for the Office of the President to act on our request for uh, segregating ten hectare area from that military reservation for them, for the homeowners. Now, dili lang ta mablaka, because uh, once na na i-actual na uh, dun na na action, ang, ang ang sheriff, because it will be the sheriff that will execute the order, then they will come to us again. Requesting for assistance, at that time, at that time, pasar na po taog. Request, hangi na na po ta suwes nga, your honor, please lang, kaya medyo apiki pa, mahinang kalaban. So, nanak, nanak na itabok, Mr. Chairman, so we pass a, a resolution now. But uh, we cannot change the tenor of the decision because uh, korte na na.
So, so, so the committee chairman on Urban Poor, since um, he is, will, will verse of this matter. So, the prayer of Councilor, the good reporter will be uh, accommodated at the proper time.
Mr. Chair, immediate reaction, Mr. Chairman. Immediate reaction, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Councilor Saldi Okon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the president, as far as the statement of good Councilor Attorney Edgar Cavandlas, has uh, ordered the committee to prepare a uh, a draft the, sato pari, getting uh, amendments for the presidential proclamation, if I am not mistaken. Now, ang problema karoon, kaya dili mo sugot ang DNR, na mo survey dili po mo sugot ang military, na mo pasok kita, para magsurvey. So the question now is, did we inform the Office of the President? That the, did the uh, DNR and the military would not allow us to get inside, to conduct a survey and preparation for the uh, you know, uh, presidential amendment as far as the proclamation is concerned? Di pa hibalu ba nato ang presidente anak, wala. Una akong query. So, tinuod na, Mr. Chairman, na is separation of power. But you must also remember that the president is still the highest official of the land. Na siya ka tungod, Mr. Chairman, kaysa sa masatong giliguan na ang presidential proclamation, ang makaboot presidente la. Yapag reverse niya na presidential proclamation, yapo na makaboot niya na. So siguro wala to giin for, Mr. Chair, ang buhatan sa presidente, na munay na itabuk sa silong dili mo sugot ang DNR, dili mo sugot ang military. Whereas kung atong giin for ang presidente, na munay na itabuk sa silong, basi itawagan sa presidente ang DNR, ngayon, ipasulod inyo. Kuta wagang sa presidente ang militari, saka Ibangilista, ipasulod inyo, kaya na ta gi prepare na presidential proclamation. Gi, gi termao ba nato na, wala, una ipangutan na diya karoon, Mr. Chairman. Kaysa tanong ako sa subila nun, muradlu, ika'y mga tao manapuyod diya karoon. Muradgi biya, ano na to sangin, hangyo hangyo, ulang na to ang korte. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Saldi Okon. Well, there, there could be, that was ato ang resolution. Proper time, Mr. Chairman, the proper time, there is a pre-proclamation, uh, what is it? Pre-proclamation committee, so composed of, composed of DNR, DPWH, DOH DNR, MGB, NHA, PCUP, CHUD, DNR, Regentan, and the City Engineering Office, no? So, maybe it is well represented by any different uh, national committees and so as the task, uh, the committee on uh, Urban Poor. So, as mentioned by the good reporter, Councilor Roger Abaday, for our resolution at the proper time. So, as requested also by uh, the committee chairman on Urban Poor on this matter. So at the proper time, we will pass a resolution. Thank you for your good special report, Councilor Roger Abaday.
We may now proceed to the agenda proper, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, majority floor leader.
Thank you. On item number one, we have a proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-seven, returning to the Sanggulian Kabataan, Barangay Punto, the city. It's resolution number two thousand twenty-one, the zero zero three series of two thousand twenty-one, covering its annual budget for calendar year two thousand twenty-one with a estimated income of two million three hundred sixty-eight thousand and eight hundred forty-eight pesos. With the information that said resolution is imperative in its entirety, move for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
Properly moved by the majority floor leader, and a second, seconded.
Seconded.
Objection? None? Hearing none? Hearing none, resolution number two zero two two dash three seven, is served by approved.
To dispense, second final reading.
Dispend, which finality, seconded.
Omnibus motion for items two, three, four, five, and six, Mr. Chairman, for having the same subject matter. Two, proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-eight, returning to the Barangay Council of Barangay number seven, the city. Its ordinance number zero two, series of two thousand twenty-one. Three, proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-nine, returning to the Barangay Council of Barangay number eleven, the city. Its ordinance number service zero two, series of two thousand twenty-one, covering, oh no. Four, proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash forty, returning to the Barangay Council of Barangay number fourteen, the city. Its ordinance number zero zero two, series of two thousand twenty-one. Five, proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash forty-one, returning to the Barangay Council of Barangay number seventeen, the city. Its ordinance number zero zero two, series of two thousand twenty-one. And six, proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash forty-two, returning to the Barangay Council of Barangay number twenty-five, the city. Its ordinance number zero zero three, series of two thousand twenty-one, covering the respective supplemental budget. Its ordinance number zero zero three, series of 2021, covering the respective supplemental budget number one of for calendar year 2021 with the estimated incomes. With the information that said ordinances are operative in their entirety. Move for the approval of said items two, three, four, five, six, mister chairman.
Properly move by the majority floor leader.
Second.
Seconded. Objection? Objection? An omnibus uh motion. Resolution number 2022 dash three-eight, resolution number 2022 dash three-nine, resolution number 2022 dash four-zero. Resolution number 2022 dash four-one, resolution number 2022 dash four-two. That will be the last? Yes, four, so, properly move and seconded. Objection? Hearing none? Hearing none? Hearing no objection? It is served by approved. It is served by approved.
Move to dispense, second final reading.
Dispense for its finality. Seconded.
Omnibus motion for items seven and eight. Uh, seven is proposed resolution number 2022 dash forty-three. Returning to the barangay council of barangay number nine, the city. Its ordinance number zero zero one, series of 2022. Eight, proposed resolution number 2022 dash forty-four, returning to the barangay council of barangay Lumbia, the city. Its ordinance number three, this 2021, series of 2021, covering the respective annual budgets for calendar year 2022. With estimated incomes, with the information that said ordinances as are operative in their entirety. Move for its, their approval, mister chairman.
Properly move by the majority floor leader.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Edna Magbandahino. Okay, objection? None? Objection? None. Resolution number 2022 dash four-three, resolution number 2022 dash four-four, is served by approved.
Move to dispense, second final reading.
Dispense for its finality.
Second.
Seconded.
Number nine is proposed resolution number 2022 dash forty-five, returning to the barangay council of barangay number fourteen, the city. Its ordinance number zero zero three, series of 2021. Entitled, "An Ordinance Creating and Implementing the Guidelines for the Person with Disabilities Fair Friendly Seal for the Buildings, Institutions, Establishments Within Barangay Fourteen", with the information that said ordinance is operative in its entirety. Move for its approval, mister chairman.
Properly move by the majority floor leader. Seconded. Objection? Objection? None. Resolution number 2022 dash four-five, served by approved.
Move to dispense, second final reading.
Dispense for its finality, seconded.
This is very laudable uh barangay ordinance, mister chairman. Uh, this should be recognized by the city social welfare department as uh one of the best uh practice in the barangay. And uh for number ten is proposed ordinance number 2022 dash eight, authorizing the honorable city mayor Oscar S. Moreno to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement MOA with the Bureau of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources ten before, represented by its regional director, Chuduro A. Bakulo Junior, with the Gusa Seaside Fisher Fox Association as beneficiary represented by Miss Deilinda Sabillano, covering the grant of fish cage, Norwegian cage, under the terms and conditions stipulated in the MOA attached her to. Move for its approval, mister chairman.
Properly move by the majority floor leader.
Second.
Seconded. Objection? Objection? None? None? Hearing none? Well, okay. Okay, way back to that proposal, that, that will be uh laudable uh resolution, no?
Yes.
But it is, it is also supported by the national law, by this by this creation and implementation of this barangay fourteen, well.
Yes, mister chairman.
You are very true and correct and majority floor leader. Anyway, there is a pending proposal, properly move and seconded. Objection? None? Hearing none? Ordinance number 2022 dash eight, is served by approved.
Move to dispense, second final reading.
Dispense for its finality, seconded.
Number eleven is proposed ordinance number 2022 dash nine, approving the alteration of plan of a portion of Golden Heaven. Memorial Park City of Phase One, located in Barangay Bulwa, the city. It's by utilizing the reserve area with an area of 2,921 square meters, specifically block six into apartment niches, columbarion walkways, toilet and parking area generating 2,298 saleable lots as applied for by the Golden Brilla Holdings Incorporated, represented by its cluster head, Stelia Maris S. Aguilar. Subject to the hearing conditions and for this purpose, amending ordinance number one three seven eight one dash 2019, as amended by ordinance number one four zero two five dash 2021. Move for its approval, mister chairman.
Properly move by the majority floor leader, seconded. Objection? Objection? Hearing none? Hearing none? Ordinance number 2022 dash nine.
Abstain, sir presiding, sir. One abstain.
One abstention.
One abstention. The ordinance number 2022 dash nine, is served by approved.
Move to dispense, second final reading.
Dispense for its finality. For its finality, any second? Seconded.
Move to dispense, second final reading.
For its finality, seconded, it's already approved.
For inclusion, we only have one item, mister chairman, proposed by councillor Roger Abaday and all the members. Move for its inclusion.
For inclusion, this should be the result of that special report of your councillor Roger Abaday. Properly move. Okay, properly move and seconded, very good, majority floor leader, for this inclusion.
Thank you, mister chairman. Well, this proposed resolution number 2022 dash forty-six, subject to styling. Earnestly requesting honorable presiding judge Anna Candida and Kasiney, branch seventeen RTC of Misamisorintal, the city to hold in abeyance the execution of the writ of demolition in civil case numbers three, four, nine, four, and five, nine, one, eight, pending the issuance of presidential proclamation by the office of the president in relation to resolution number one three six seven eight dash 2020, adapted by the 19th City Council. Move for its approval, mister chairman.
Properly move by the majority floor leader, seconded. Objection? Objection? Hearing none? Hearing none? Resolution number 2022 dash four-six, subject for styling for our very own secretary, Acturo Desandegat. Move and seconded, since there is no objection after all, it is served by approved. It is served by approved.
Move to dispense, second final reading.
Dispense for its finality. Seconded.
There being no other pending, mister chairman, move to adjourn.
Session adjourn.